I don't know if you saw that on the agenda that it was tried to be pushed by, I don't know how that got on there. So, um, I did ask, um, I didn't see it, but then he, don't we have done that public comment? So then I was talking to Bill, Bill was calling, um, Tom, and he said, okay, um, I can't, we should at least get a public comment. Welcome, everyone. Tonight we have a public caucus, um, to, to speak about, um, transfer of money from ARPA funds, I believe it's $580,000, um, into, uh, crime prevention. So, welcome Eileen Cipriani, Chief Carroll, and Mayor Cognetti. Thank you for coming.
Uh, so before you, you have, uh, not, not the first of the Rescue Plan rebudget proposals. Um, last year, we reallocated funding for a number of different things, uh, mostly our, our pools, uh, and parks in the city. So this is another iteration of that, and the, and this will not be the last one. The Rescue Plan funds need to all be obligated by the end of 2024 and spent by the end of 2026. So, a, a lot of what we're doing now with 10 months to go there, uh, and Eileen is, is working on this on a daily basis, is looking at what programs are working, what programs are maybe either less popular or we're not, we don't have the time to put them together. We'll be looking at those funds and then putting them in, back into other things that, that are working. So we will likely be coming back to you with other, uh, different rebudgets, um, Stormwater being another piece of the puzzle that we might be, be coming back to, to see about allocating some funds there. So what you have in front of you, and Eileen can give a little more detail on, uh, where we're transferring from, but we've taken a couple pieces of Rescue Plan that we haven't been able to quite flush out like we want to and don't have time to, to run a full program. For example, our tech grants, we are tech business grants. Um, we took that, those funds and some of the leftover funds that we originally had allocated for the landscape analysis, the Muffel Hun study, that was, did not, uh, we didn't need the full $100,000 for that. So there was some, how much money was, three?
Three hundred, or 30,000, 623.
30,000, yeah. So it was 30,000 left over from that. So that's part of the 580 as well. What we're proposing to do is move that over to Violence Prevention Programming, which is part of our original Rescue Plan allocation with that, that Muffel Hun study doing an analysis of what violence prevention looks like in Scranton, analyzing what the gaps are and what programs we might, might need to bring in. What this funding would go to is being able to seed fund the types of programs that we need to have in the city. So we all know that we've been talking really intensely about this since Detective Bill Martin was shot in early January, but these efforts have been going on for a long time from the law enforcement perspective and also from the community perspective. However, there are gaps in services in our community that other cities have, like Violence Interruption Program, Street Outreach. Um, for example, we just, last week, uh, we were at the U.S. Attorney's Office, uh, he hosted us and law enforcement officials, community organizations, uh, their elected officials and some potential funders to sit and have a Zoom with York, Pennsylvania. They have a group Violence Intervention Program that has proven to be very successful. That's a model that potentially Scranton, Lackawanna County could take pieces of to shape what this funding would go to. So, remember, we have to allocate the money by the end of 2024. It's not that we necessarily would have this specific organization all up and running by the end of 2024. Maybe we will, that would be great, but even if we don't, we would need to move these funds to somewhere like, for example, the Scranton Area Foundation for the purpose of Violence Intervention, Violence Prevention Programs. Uh, if we moved it to a place like the Scranton Area Foundation, it could be there for those purposes and, you know, another foundation could be putting money into that same pot so that we can continue to have confidence that we could start up, um, one or more Violence Prevention Programs. Um, this is in tandem with all of the other things that we've already done with the Rescue Plan. We've put, um, with, you know, obviously all together with council, a million dollars in our nonprofits, 950,000 in wellness, drug overdose prevention and behavioral, uh, interventions, $775,000 in educational catch-up, $725,000 in childcare. We've put $500,000 into workforce. Um, that's all with Rescue Plan. Other pieces of the, the puzzle that are, you know, in parallel with law enforcement are our co-responder program with Scranton Counseling, uh, and a host of, of other things that we've all been working on for a long time because we know that law enforcement is extraordinarily important. We all know that. Of course, we've been talking about it for a long time and again, very intensely in this last six weeks, but law enforcement is not the only solution to community safety and community violence prevention. Uh, it's really important that we continue to engage the community. We want our youth especially, we want our community to have the services and the types of quality of life that they need in order to thrive so they don't get to a point where they're joining a gang, so they don't get to a point where they get into the justice system.
So to start off, that, the $30,000 that's, was left over from the Muffel Hun study, right? That is part of that public health and wellness piece, right?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
And that's where that original, the $100,000 came from, the public health and wellness, right?
Right, right.
All right. What, the, um, how much money was also in that going towards public health and wellness? So you said like the co, the co-responder program with Scranton Counseling Center, are there other, like behavioral type programs that, that money was used to, to fund?
So the, am I right that the 100,000 was part of the, the 950? Yeah. So the 100,000 for, that we allocated for that study was part of the 950,000 that went to wellness, drug overdose prevention and behavioral health.
So night, and that answers my question. So it was 900,000 at that point in time?
And Scranton Counseling, that, that's not ARPA-funded. I just wanted to mention it as one of the many measures that, that we're taking and have been taking, uh, to add to law enforcement's toolkit.
And then the other piece is, it's 500, so it's $80,000 from that public health and wellness. Um, have we spent the rest of that 900,000 at this point in time or where are we at with that 900?
Yeah. So it's, it's entirely obligated. So it's good till, to 26. The, the vast majority of it's spending, is spent at this point. Um, just so you know, 50,000 of that, the, the piece that we haven't discussed, we had issued a grant, a wellness grant to the Center for Health and Human Services Research. After they received the grant, uh, they came back to us and wanted to, they had some change of personnel and staff, wanted to entirely redo their budget and scope of work, which was no longer in alignment with, um, their original premise and what we were interested in. So we never awarded that one. So that 50,000 then is being repurposed.
So that's the 50 and they, and that, that's what makes up that 80. So the 50 and the 30 make up that 80 from public health and wellness. With, and most of that stuff, what, most of that allocation was put into behavioral health?
There were three buckets. So there was behavioral health, uh, drug and alcohol overdose and, um...
Wellness.
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 And then, um, this is just business tech grants. So the 500 is coming just from the tech grants. So we do have the small business, micro grants and the small business grants, but this is just the tech portion of, of that?
Yeah. We, we've allocated this, the $5 million to small business to this point. The, the tech grants were another idea that we had and something that we thought could, could be really impactful. Haven't, haven't quite been able to get the program where it needs to be for us to execute it well here, given the timeline. So we thought this was a good candidate, uh, for a rebudget for this purpose. Again, the community violence being a, part of the original purpose of the Rescue Plan Funds and allowed use.
All right. So I guess that explains where we, where we get this piece of money from. So now, now that we have the 580, is any of it going to be put into law enforcement or is it going to mostly go into mental health, behavioral health? What, what areas are we looking to go from?
So this would, this would go to, uh, whether it becomes a one organization or multiple, um, this would go to seed fund an organization like, for example, the Group Violence Intervention or GVI Program in York, Pennsylvania. It's, it would not be a city-run organization. It could be help funded by the city, funded by nonprofits, funded by the county, funded by state or federal grants. Those, those monies are certainly out there, but it would not be an organization that the city runs. It would be, uh, potentially the, the governance structure would include the police chief, a member of council, a member of the DA's office, the mayor, uh, other, the, you know, a state trooper or someone from that, uh, law enforcement entity, people from the school district. There, the governance structure would, would include the elected offices and some law enforcement, but the real action, the real, real, um, meat of the work would be done by paid staff that are working on the ground with kids and with people to prevent violence, to help kids not enter the justice system at all. Or, in addition, work with justice-involved youth, justice-involved people to get them back on track when they're coming out of prison or when they're coming, or when they're in probation or coming out of probation. So there's, it's, it's preventative in its nature. The point of it is that it's not the city, it's not the Scranton Police Department, it's not the DA's office. It would be an organization, um, of its own that has paid staff to be able to do this work. These have been very successful programs throughout the country. Um, again, York is a, a really good example here in Pennsylvania, but, um, I've talked to different mayors through, throughout other cities. Baltimore has a really good program, Cleveland has a really good program. There's good models out there. You know, there's, there's no cookie cutter solution and, and it doesn't mean to say that one particular city is exactly what we should do here in Scranton. We've got work to do all together with, between all of the, the entities, between law enforcement and the, the community organizations, but we've got funders that are private, that are interested in doing this. We, we met, um, a couple of them last week, and I know that, again, there are grants out there at the federal level certainly, and I imagine, um, PCCD and, uh, the governor's office would, would have funding for something like this. So it's a big endeavor. It's going to take time to get to the right solution, but we feel this is the, the right use for some of our Rescue Plan funds while we have them to be able to move them now so that we can help seed fund something like this.
So we're looking to have an oversight board maybe made up of mental health, law enforcement, that type of an oversight board, but we're looking to seed fund this, a startup organization or an organization that already exists?
It would be a new organization. Potentially, there would be a, a broader organization that, that does this in multiple places, but, um, the, the main point would be that it's not a government organization. It's not the government. Um, it would be its, its own, you know, 501(c)(3) or something like that. So that's where, when thinking about how these funds, um, would operate, these would go probably to a place like the Scranton Area Foundation to sit in an account. It's, it's obligated from our end. We would be involved and are very involved already with all of those entities in thinking through what that looks like, but we want to be able to put this money to good use and be able to do something like that. Um, we think that the landscape study that's going to come back in a few months is going to propose something like this. This is a great opportunity for us to have already put money on the table and that will actually help get other people at the table as well. If we're putting zero in from the city, or in the case of York, they actually started with general funded dollars. We don't want to have to do that while we have this incredible opportunity with the Rescue Plan.
So do we plan on, I'm sorry, in the future, do we plan on, uh, funding this, um, through our budget and are there other entities that would be contributing to this? Uh, is it open to, um, are we going to advertise like that to look for other funding?
Yeah. So ideally, ideally, this is the type of organization that would be mostly grant-funded. I could see it being something that we fund a, a, a small amount through our non-governmental expenditures, just like we do, you know, we have the veterans grants, we've got the community center grants, we have the Everheart Museum that we support. I think it would be something that we would want to live on in, in that way, that we are always, we always have skin in the game, but the, the vast majority of the operating budget for an entity like this should be grant-funded and philanthro, philanthropy-funded. Um, again, I think there's a lot of interest there for an organization to come online in that way. Um, and we've, we've seen a lot of, a lot of interest already.
Yeah. I don't want to see some, i- i- if we started it, I'd like, if we can keep it going, would be the best, best scenario, um, just to start it. And if the funding ran out, then it would be almost futile. It would be kind of a lot of waste of time, but that would be great if we can keep it going.
Yeah. And just to, to the model, I'll just read off the governance board of the, the York ones, so you can see that it's not just a municipal and, and it's not municipal-funded only. It's the, there's a project manager in that team, but then there's the district attorney, the mayor, the police chief, the county probation chief, the chief assistant U.S. Attorney, um, a healthcare quality officer, the well-span health helps fund it. Um, we've got community leaders, pastors, we've got, um, other law enforcement leads, other district attorneys. So it's, it's not just the municipality. Uh, and again, they've been able to get these, get grants and have this philanthropic-led fundraising, uh, for the majority of the lifespan of this so far.
I'd like two questions. So, um, I'm sure everybody in this room is totally for, uh, eradicating gang violence. I, I've absolutely, and so am I. Um, and of course, my primary concern is the safety of the residents and the safety of our fine police, police officers. So, and I get and understand these prevention programs and they're going to take time, but, um, and obviously we're, a lot of money to even, even put it together, 600 grand to seek money to sustain these, um, this organization or pro, program, organization. First off, who will they report to if it's non-governmental? Who do they report to? Because, you know, we're, we're investing in a lot of money and time into this organization. And number two, until then, um, like I said, my primary concern is the safety of the residents and the police department. Uh, have you reached out or asked for input with regards to, you know, the whole big picture, not just the programs with, you know, the collaborative effort you have with all the other law enforcement entities who've been here as a presence since the shooting, who's done a fantastic job. I see them every day, everywhere, which, which is fantastic. Do they have a seat at the table with this, with input? And until these programs, uh, come to fruition, is there anything you need right now, Chief Carroll, or resources that you need, um, to help you combat and, and you're part of this? Is there anything you don't have that you need? I know there's concerns that have been brought to me by police officers that, hey, we need our own IT guy. Um, it's not working. Uh, so, I mean, could some of that money be used towards that so they have every tool in their toolbox right now outside of waiting for programs for prevention?
So I'll, I'll ask, I'll answer the governance question first. So, uh, the entity in New York, for example, we just can, had a, a hour and a half long Zoom with them. They've worked with John Jay College that has really a playbook for this. They work with John Jay College to do, uh, the, a lot of the, the administrative pieces, like audits and those types of things. So it's, I mean, it's a full-blown organization, nonprofit. It would get audited and have, you know, attorneys and, and things that would, that they would need to work with to make sure that the, all of the governance pieces were, were done properly. So that, there's, there's a, a precedent for that. Um, and on the IT piece, we're chief and, um, Jack Rieger, IT Director, have been working on what that job description would look like and, uh, will likely be coming to council with that proposal soon.
And, um, the collaborative law enforcement team that's doing a great job now, are, do they have a seat at this table with, with input? I mean, they're experts and, and they're, they're doing a fantastic job.
Right. So...
I hope they were consulted.
Right. So the, the model here is you've got the municipal police force, you've got the school district, you've got the county DA, and you've got state troopers involved, the U.S. Attorney is involved. So you have state, local, and federal government in addition to the school district, all at the table as part of the governance board.
And my, yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Hello. Um, we are sitting in, in a, um, a spot where we are comfortable with every, the equipment that we have and the budget that you provided to us. Um, we are functioning according to our design. Uh, as you know, we have a very dedicated and efficient police department. Um, and they are, uh, out there constantly, um, arresting, interdicting the violence, uh, daily with our partners, as you mentioned. And our partnership goes to the highest levels of state, even the, even federal, um, entities being involved, uh, with their coordination. It's working well, actually very well, and our, um, statistics, statistically, we are doing very well as compared to last year. Uh, 22 versus 23. But it's always overshadowed by the, the juvenile violent crime piece because it's shocking, shocks the system, uh, and it creates fear. And we've had a series of high-profile incidents that we are addressing. For the majority of the incidents that do kick off, we're arresting. But what we're seeing is this cycle over and over again. It occurs, we arrest. It occurs, we arrest. And then there's an expectation that the police department has to stop this. The police department has got to have the violence prevention piece. Why it's important for me to be here tonight and, and to discuss this is, um, the law enforcement end of it and our partners are out there every day interdicting. Um, but we can't solve the social issues, and I know I've been here before and, and speaking to this, but we're just a small piece, law enforcement's a small piece of this puzzle. And our partners in the community that are already serving this, this function of, um, adding structure to these kids' lives and, um, occupying their time and, you know, productive time outside of school, uh, only lasts so long, and, and they need the help too. I don't know what the full answer is, what the end state is going to be. Um, but this is the right direction. I'm confident in it from looking at other platforms to go forward in. Um, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We have to figure this out as we go, and I'm hoping we get the support that we need, that everybody comes to the table and works as a team in the community to get this done. Um, until then, we keep plugging away and we do, we will continue the good work on the streets that we're doing every day.
Looking at the, um, the Violence Intervention Unit from York, it seems that it's run by the police department. Is that correct?
They're a big stakeholder in it, but no, not totally. Um, that is one aspect that we looked at. Uh, the, uh, U.S. Attorney brought that to our attention. And it is appealing and it may work here, but again, it's going to take some, some effort to see if what they have and how we tailor that to the city of Scranton, uh, to make it function. I don't know the answer yet. What's complete?
If we were using this as seed money to start up a, a crime prevention unit or a, you know, a juvenile crime prevention unit, something like that, I could definitely get behind that. You know what I mean? If we were specifically targeting that age group that we're seeing this coming from at this point in time.
That, yeah, the education piece, we're arresting kids way too young with, with handguns. Um, and anything we can do to, to be a partner in that, we will. Um, it doesn't say the police department's not going to have an educational component along with these other entities. There are many police organizations that are community-based specifically for this mission. Uh, if we can get to that point where we, uh, with staffing and, uh, budget considerations, if we can get to that point, I am all for it. Building that trust with our community early is, is key.
That's what I mean, like seeing things like that, and I, I think that's why we, that's why I called for us to have this meeting is, you know, looking for what are those areas we're going to put it into. If we were looking at that, you know, that crime prevention unit for juveniles, you know, I mean, I think that's a good route. If, uh, we were talking about using this money to help with our staffing issues, uh, that could help. Um, I know there's been a lot of talk about juvenile placements. We don't have juvenile detention placements in our county, um, and that's something that's on the table, I think, right now. Um, a lot of times, we're sending kids that need placements out of state. And I mean, that, that type of placement would be a preventative, even though it doesn't seem preventative. It's, um, trying to stop that cycle that we're having with the parent crisis that we're having in America or everything else. Um, it's going to try to stop that cycle and get them put into the right, um, services and supports that, that those kids need. Um, has, has that been discussion?
We have discussed that at length. That is a inherent responsibility of the county and not the city of Scranton. And it's really a lack of resources, period. Not so much money, um, where we have to transport, where the county transports juveniles who are going to be, um, housed quite a distance, a couple states away, um, to get those services. Is there, there's talks to, uh, trying to find a solution to where we can have more availability locally. Um, but as far as, again, that's after the fact, um, and not our responsibility. As the city of Scranton, we do the, our enforcement piece is present. It's the prevention that we're going to try to focus on now, and the county would be mostly, um, after the arrest. And they add their social services and court ordered, um, remedies. Um, and that, after that release is really where this program could kick, uh, pick back up to where they can help them get on the straight and narrow and not just one, you know, conviction and now that's the, the cycle for the rest of your life. Um, so they're going to try to redirect after that as well. Again, uh, the people who are best suited for that are not the police, police officers, but the, the, uh, the entities that govern, uh, do it now.
Yeah. And those entities are also having staffing issues with high turnover rates that, and then that's a real part of the, this whole thing too. What, what types of things from York are we really looking to?
Right. So, yeah. So, I mean, and that's where, you know, I want, I did want to start off with the, the nonprofit grants. Um, this afternoon, actually, Chief and I were just at the NEPA Youth Shelter, um, talking with, uh, Maureen Gray there, uh, the Boys and Girls Club Outreach about the, how the Rescue Plan grants have impacted them. Rashida Lovely from NEPA PAC was also there, talking about how the, the wellness and nonprofit grants, educational catch-up grants have been helpful for their, um, their organization. Staffing definitely came up as an issue. Wages came up as an issue. Transportation came up as an issue. So we'll, you know, we'll continue to, to help them get grants and with our, in the future HUD funding that we, that we have, continue to help, help them. As you know, we, we've got the, the Scranton School District and City Shared Development Coordinator now, which is really, really exciting. Joe Ricardo started last Monday. So we're, we're working, there's one person who's truly working, um, in, for both entities, which is, is a great start. Um, but all of those pieces are part of this. Um, you know, these kids and I don't, you know, I feel silly, um, Councilmember Schuster talking to you about working with kids. This is what you, you do all day. Um, they, they need many positive role models. They need people that, that look like them to be responsible adults in their lives if their, their parents aren't able to fill that role. The, the York, uh, GVI has a couple of different programs I wanted to note. There is a more graduations, fewer funerals scholarship that these, uh, students or these kids are able to, um, get through a particular program and go for free to the Harrisburg Area Community College. So HAC is, um, a partner of this program. Uh, I don't want to put any of our colleges and universities on the spot, but of course, if we do this, we'll be looking for them to, to step up and do something similar. So they're, this, they're able to, you know, give these kids an, an avenue, a clear avenue. I'm sure many of our trades unions would be up for, for participating in something like this as well, um, to give these kids a, a real path forward. They also have a Big Little Things Fund, which I, is something that comes up in so many conversations we have, and I'm sure many of you on council as well, that there's a, a resource, a fund within the, the GVI entity that helps, you know, pay for a, a driver's license fee or helps pay for, um, the parking ticket. That could be a barrier. Or, you know, those $100 here or there or that blown tire that to, you know, those of us that, that are privileged enough to not have to worry about that could be, you know, a game changer and send somebody on a path where they go, you know, commit a crime. The police pick them up and all of a sudden that $50, $100 that, that could have been solved for lands their, their life in a, in a bad place and adds to the, the burden of the police department instead of being something that, that could have been prevented. So those are a couple of the, the pieces that I think are important to note. And again, this is all in parallel and to help support our police department, to help support law enforcement. We'd like, um, the police department to not have to be so busy and it's making, making more community entities available, more resources of, available to folks will help to do that. And, oh, the other piece would be that this is Rescue Plan funding and we wouldn't be able to use this funding to give directly to the police department for operations in that manner. So we should keep that in mind as well.
And that would just be how it's, how we're coding it or how we're, we're labeling it?
Right. Since we're, we're moving to a line item for violence prevention, so that, that section has its own set of parameters, just like everything else in, in ARPA, about what, what's allowable expenditures. So, we, you know, we need to be... So, you know, we need to be mindful of what, you know, what programs we're putting it into.
So if that were to occur, would we be able to seed fund any kind of unit within the police department that does community outreach, anything like that?
That would probably be quite a challenge.
All right, when it comes to the nonprofit groups that we'd be working with, do we have anyone in mind? Do we know their track records? How are we going to vet their track records?
So that's all part of the process. We certainly have a lot of trusted partners that we work with, that we've given grants to, that are part of our Youth Engagement Council. We've broken up into subcommittees at the Youth Engagement Council, and we've got partnerships and justice-related subcommittee that the chief is a part of, members of the Scranton School District are a part of. So we believe that within that group, we'll start to dig in on some of this, and we'll continue. The county DA's office is also a part of that. So we'll continue to look at that there. But I think there are a lot of great partners that we have here, but part of the point from the beginning in, you know, March of '21, when we were starting to look at this, is that there are entities, there are organizations that should be there that aren't. We have, you know, other cities that have models of, you know, violence interrupters and things like that, people who would, for example, go to the hospital on a daily, nightly basis if there is somebody that, you know, has been shot or been stabbed, work with them, work with their family, try to help them navigate, try to help them mitigate, try to prevent, you know, retaliatory violence. We don't have those types of entities here in Scranton, and it might be a really good idea to help fund or help support something like that here, entities like that here.
The county DA's office is on the Youth Activities Committee?
Yes, they are. At our last meeting, we had almost 40 people at the meeting, and that's really where all the people, all the entities that come together, we are, right now, we all have the right attitude, and we know where we want to head, but we're looking for a coordination piece that will really help with this funding. When we actually make it to where we decide what is best for Scranton, that'll help guide the efforts. Everybody be able to focus their efforts together in all the same direction and add a little structure to it.
Will funds be spent prior to receiving the Muffelhun study and the recommendations that may come out of that?
No, so we'll, that study should be out in a few months, that'll help inform the way that this gets structured. You know, if we all come together and think that this is it, this is the plan, this is the organization, we certainly could start it before 20, the end of 2024. The good thing about the Rescue Plan Funds is that while we do need to obligate them and our lingo get them out the door, they don't have to actually be spent until 2026. So, well, we certainly hope the timeline is shorter than that. We don't, we're not in a rush to make sure that these are spent down by the end of 2024.
They just have to be earmarked in 2024.
They need to be out off of, for something like this, they would need to be off our books essentially and allocated to.
Right, we'd have to have an MOU or a contract with another entity, that's when it's considered obligated.
Okay, so you're going away from Muffelhun in July, right?
That's going to be part of this. So we're doing, we're doing work now with the Youth Engagement Council, with the DA's office, with PSP, we've got partners in the US Attorney's Office, we've got, we have colleagues everywhere that are helping us figure this out, and they're doing it with us. So that work will continue on, the study will help inform us of what these experts have determined might be, might be the right path forward, but it's work that's happening in real time and will be helped by that. I mean, if we figure out in the next couple of months that we want to do this, we certainly can get ahead of having the final binded and printed study. We're in touch with the Muffelhun folks all the time, so that's not something that we necessarily have to wait for the fully complete study for, but it's really important that we do it right, just like all of these things. We don't want to slap together something and have it not have the staying power or the funding to move forward. We would want it to be done right, to the best of our ability, done right the first time. We heard in our Zoom last week with York that they started off with a couple of different executive directors that weren't the right person. It was, I think, somebody that was on the police force to start, you know, that wasn't going to work. The whole point is that the executive director's not law enforcement. They finally got to the point where their executive director is somebody who's been doing this work with kids in York, came up, was themselves justice-involved, and are now able to be a really credible messenger with these kids and these young adults. We'd be looking for that, that type of model. I have, you know, I have thoughts of who that could be, but that's going to be a really big piece of the puzzle, and it's not worth launching until that team is in place, because, you know, law enforcement can sit around a table, we can sit around the table with this governance board all we want, but unless we have the right people that are doing that work, having those conversations in those people's homes, at the hospital, at the schools, on the basketball courts and the soccer fields, that piece is probably the very most important.
Okay, so you just, Mr. Supranity said that the violence prevention is going to be a line item, so it's technically a line item now, right? So when you decide on the dispersment of them funds, are you going to come back and update us? Do they have to come and form a resolution each dispersment? Or, like, originally, it was supposed to be with ARPA, but would be updated with a pie or a chart so we know exactly where the money's being spent as it's being decided?
Sure.
Instead of just voting tonight to give you the money, and then, you know, we'd like to keep track of that for the residents?
So, you know, we do submit the quarterly report with ARPA, and that would always be contained in there as what the expenditures are.
Broken out?
It will also, well, it might not appear in that great of detail on the website, but it will be in that report that comes out every quarter.
So the next time council sees some of these funds spent, it will just be in the report, correct?
Right.
Now, if you have to get into contracts with individuals, will that be coming in front of council?
So we wouldn't be in contracts with individuals, right? So it would, if it's an MOU, would someone, no, that wouldn't be how that would go? If we entered into a contract where we put something out for competitive procurement under an RFP, yes.
Would all of these contracts that we might engage in go through that process?
If we're doing, if it's a contract, I don't know how this would, this would work, but if, say if we took the money and it went to, you know, a nonprofit such as SAF, that would just be an MOU to SAF. And then in our tracking report, you would see what SAF reports back to us through that.
But, I mean, this would be a very big endeavor, and it was something that we would absolutely come back to you with the plan, because we want you all to be involved, we want you to be as, you know, as bought in as the rest of the community. This is something that's, you know, really needs community buy-in, and city council's a vital part of that. So we would, we would come back to you with that anyway.
Is a lot of the, are a lot of the places that the money's going to be going to fund, is that going to be driven out of the Youth Activities Committee?
So it's, this 580 might go to the Scranton Area Foundation, for example, as a place where they could hold it, and it could be just for one program, or potentially, there would be a couple different types of organizations that we need. Potentially, there's an organization somewhere that would want to set up a branch essentially here that we would end up, you know, not having to create a new organization, but helping fund them moving to Scranton. It's, you know, we're early stages in that way.
Is that going to be the idea generator, though, that group?
That group, that group is a big part of it, but we'll continue to stay very closely in touch, which Chief is every day, with Pennsylvania State Police, with our federal partners across the street at the US Attorney's Office, county DA, again, the DA's office is part of that, the Subcommittee on the Youth Engagement Council, and we're, you know, in touch with them on, really, really PD, obviously, on a daily basis, but we've been in very close touch with them on this and what might work and what might not.
Anyone else have any questions? No? Well, thank you, Mayor Cognetti, Eileen Supranity, and Chief Carroll, thank you for coming in and providing us with the information.
Thank you, and we'll look forward to seeing you next week to talk about housing.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.